Meeting is being televised and recorded. Is anyone in the audience recording?
No, it stays.
Next time. It's yours. This is just one of you. How many times are we gonna say we're not taking this? We had a 7:00 hearing. Adam, we have to reopen the massage hearing?
No.
That's over.
You've opened and continued massage.
Continued.
So we would be on to 7:05. I believe they have asked to be held to the later portion of the agenda as they wait for their engineer who's attending a separate meeting. So we would be moving on to 7:30, which would be the White Development.
Okay, and that's time, okay. 7:30 public hearing for White Development Corporation requesting a site plan approval for the use of administrative offices and a training center at 49 Central Street, Auburn, map 41, parcel five.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Todd Broder. I'm an attorney representing R.H. White Construction. Just briefly introduce the project team and the members that are here tonight. Norman Gamash and Mike Weaver from Gary and Hanlon, the land surveyors and engineers on the project, and Carl Franceschi is from D.R.A. Architects, the architect on the project. Several members of the R.H. White team are here to answer any questions that you may have. Speaking to you about 49 Central Street, properties in the Residence A zoning district, the former Knights of Columbus Lodge, as I'm sure you know. R.H. White since purchased the property, seeking to develop it into office space and a training center. The structure initially was thought to maybe be reusable, but they've made a decision to demolish and build a two-story structure on essentially the same footprint. I'm gonna ask Mike Weaver to describe the site to you, and we can show you the building and then take questions after that.
Slide it back so we can all see what's going on here. Good evening, I'm Mike Weaver with Gary and Hanlon. I'm the engineer on the project. This kinda gives you an overview of what we're proposing on the site. Look one page here quickly, get in on existing what's happening. Excuse me. Currently, there is just over a 7,100 square foot building that's the existing structure. And pavement coming in onto the site, a small landscape island in the middle of the parking lot here. And what they're proposing to do is, let's see, raise the existing building, do some minor round work with the parking lot, and reconfigure it. Again, here's proposed building. Again, the original building was about 7,100 square feet of a footprint. New building is just over 6,400 square feet. The entrances, major entrance coming through here, which is gonna remain, and the existing entrance over here, kinda shared with the cemetery access, that's gonna remain also. What they're planning on doing on the inside of the site is, again, there's a small island here that'll be removed, and a larger landscape island will be constructed. The existing shed in the back corner will be removed, and then reconfiguring the parking lot and the striping in there. Currently, there are about 77 spaces on the site. Not all of them are to current standards for size. The reconfiguration of the parking lot itself will provide 88 parking spaces. Spaces are adequate for the closed use on the site. Again, we are adding some more landscaping areas through the site. There's gonna be a net reduction in impervious area, about 1,300 square feet, so we're actually removing pavement from the site. The building building is smaller, and we're also removing impervious area and pavement from the site. I'll flip over to the existing conditions on the site here. Currently, what happened stormwater-wise is there's kind of a divide, half room here. All the water travels towards the island site, towards the east. Majority of it flows towards the southeast over here, and there's a swell coming up, the existing pavement that runs down through the property in the back, which is also owned by White Development. Remaining of the runoff comes off in this direction over here, flowing towards the back. We're not proposing to alter overall the flow pass-through here. Again, with the grading of it, similar areas still gonna be flowing over through this direction here, and again, in the back still be flowing this direction here. What we are proposing to do is, currently, the swell over here, there's no, it's not armored at all, it's just a natural channel through there. There's been some minor erosion. We are proposing to rip wrap that channel to secure it, so there's no more erosion. And additionally, right now, there's no infiltration at all on site. All the water runs directly out the site. So we are going to take the roof runoff and install a below-grade infiltration system. This has been sized to handle to infiltrate the roof runoff from a two-year storm and a 10-year storm prior to any discharge coming through there. Utility-wise, again, sewer's coming in this way here. The intent is to reuse the existing sewer service to the building, pending inspection to make sure it's in good shape, but reuse that existing sewer service. For water utility to the site, we're gonna install a new six-inch fire service for the building, and then a new two-inch domestic water service coming in. Electric will come through from the pole over here to a new pad monarch transformer and then to the building. This'll be underground. And, I said, and for drains, as I mentioned, we're not planning on altering the existing drainage on the site. Still gonna be flowing across from here, but we will be augmenting and armoring the discharge over here. As I'd mentioned, we are reducing the impervious area on the site by about 1,300 square feet. The site is in an aqua-protection overlay district, the aqua district. It currently calls for maximum of 15% impervious coverage. We are exceeding that currently. Again, it is a pre-existing non-conforming use. Currently, the site's at around 67.5% impervious, and we're gonna bring it down to about 65.5%. So about a 2% reduction in the impervious area on the site. So we are, so that's the 1,300 square feet that's coming through. I'll go through here, we got some other plans here. As required by the bylaws, we've gone through, we've contracted with a landscape architect. There is some current landscaping, basically there is a little small island through here, but there's not a significant amount of landscaping on the site as is right now. So we are proposing a vast improvement, I wanna say, on the landscaping, bringing in some trees around to spruce the entire site up through here. I said, out in front of the building now, there's really nothing there for any landscaping at all. It's basically paved right to the building will be a landscape strip in front of the site with some site trees and also some vegetation in front of the building through here. Again, one other thing I missed before is dumpster location, that currently is the dumpster will be placed out in the back over here, so you get access to the site over there. The front through here, the sidewalk for access to the site, and also four handicap parking spaces being proposed also. All those meet the ADA requirements for access to the building, and also for grades across the parking spaces. Again, this is the proposed layout again, coming through here, 26-foot wide entrance coming in. We're also adding site lighting through here. We have light, site lights located from here in the parking lot, and then some also some lights on the building itself, designated snow storage areas on the site. As for the building itself, I said, we have some renovations that were presented with the plans. Again, a two-story building as opposed to the single-story building that was out there right now. Again, it is architecturally, it's done through here. Very architecturally pleasing building, I believe. Layout in here, be handicap accessible for the residents or the users in the site. And that's basically what we have going on. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Your drainage, as it exists now on that site, is fine?
Yes, what happens currently, again, this should be considered a redevelopment project. It's flowing across the parking lot in this manner, and it's discharging through a swell that runs this direction. There is a little bit of, at the end of this pavement here, a little bit of washout where the water spills off the edge, and that's why we're gonna go through with some rip wrap, armor that, just to secure that channel. Looks like at one point someone tried to put some concrete in there, and it kinda washed away, just to mitigate the water action, but with the rip wrap, and it'll take care of any future erosion off that corner.
We'd like to see that the site lighting is zero at the property line.
Okay.
Okay? There are neighbors across the street, and other than that, it looks like it's a significant improvement over what exists there now. Any board members have comments?
Just on the use, could you explain a little bit about the use? Training center, is there gonna be any heavy equipment or anything like that being brought on to the site?
As for, okay, training on the equipment itself, or be, it's, I don't believe so, no. What it's gonna be intended for is more of classroom training.
Classroom instruction.
Have a floor plan in here. You see where, on the first floor, couple of conference rooms, lunchroom, office area through here, and the second floor's an office room also, and then three training rooms upstairs. So it's not gonna be huge equipment brought up saying, how do you use an excavator, having big holes in the park, no, this is more for office training.
So what are the hours, what are the intended hours of operation for this site?
Standard business hours. I'm not sure their hours are now, but probably, I would say, 7:30 to 5:00, in that range. Again, it's gonna be a lot of office space through here, but again, they may have early morning meetings or something going on prior to a construction site, but it's not going to be a 24-hour operation, no.
The hours for the lights? Hours for the lighting?
Yeah, we'd like it to go to security lighting only after 9:00 P.M.
That's fine.
And the construction time would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00, and on Saturdays till noon time, no Sundays or holidays?
That's fine.
Any other board comment?
To the chair, now, excuse me, does the parking lot need to be illuminated after the close of business? I guess, I think that's the general question as far as security lighting after 9:00. You know, you're not storing equipment or vehicles in the lot at night, are you? So, you know, after the last person leaves, is it, and I guess the concern would be that it's in a residential neighborhood, and I know that you're, you have some deceased neighbors on one side and your own company on the other too, but the people across do kinda look down into the lot, so the concern would be their quality of life, and, you know, I would imagine that the majority of time you're only gonna be using these lights would be October to March or so, when you're there, when it's dark. I don't imagine that you have a lot of night activity on the site, is that correct?
You only need cameras for something small ballage in for our safety or important.
Yeah, so when people go out after work, they can see. Okay, and that would be my only concern, and I think that's sort of what some of the board members were getting at.
Any public comment? Yes, sir?
Frank, it's about the 70-foot Central Street, across the street. And we don't, I have to tell you, it's on the zoning board, we're working on the building and stuff, and it's gonna have a little building very close, very active.
Thank you. Do, any other questions?
No, I don't have any.
Motion to approve with conditions?
I'll make the motion to approve with conditions.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have to name the conditions first.
I was gonna say, I was hoping we would get the conditions prior to the vote, but...
Other conditions?
I mean, the conditions are, are we talking standard conditions?
All standard conditions, state and town law. Hours of operation, lights to be shielded, and zero at the property line, Adam?
So you want a submission of a photometric plan showing zero?
And that they're shielded, 'cause as you said, the neighbors sit up above, and they look down.
Well, I would say if they're gonna use ballards, you really don't shield a ballard because it's an indirect translucent light that's just giving off more of a glow as opposed to, generally, the shielding we see is on car dealers who have, you know, 25, 30-foot, you know, sodium lights that just give off an immense amount of light.
Minimal security lighting after 7:30?
Well, I think that, yeah, if you wanna set an hour, or if you wanna say, there's two ways to say it, after 7:30 or after the close of the facility for the day.
For the safety of the employees, I would suggest after the, after business hours.
Which may be variable.
Yep.
And adhere to the landscaping plan as he described it to us.
Yeah, and I think that we include a general condition of construction per the submitted and approved plans, and the landscaping is included in that, so that would be part of, would be captured in that. So I just wanna ensure that I have everything that we're talking about. We have the construction hours, they would be, I'm sorry, I missed what you said, generally in a residential area, we'd do eight to, eight to 4:30 or eight to 5:00.
Okay, eight to 4:30. Monday through Friday.
Correct, and then it would be 8:30 to noon on Saturday.
No Sundays or...
No Sundays or holidays. Then we have abide by the decisions and conditions of all other boards and commissions, submission of a photometric plan showing zero lumens at the property line, all lights shall be turned off after the close of business, and the construction shall be per the approved and submitted plans.
Except?
Good luck.
Eric took the vote, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Adam, why did we wait on the other one that was a 7:05?
Because Mr. Keenan was otherwise occupied. He is here now, and I'm sure he has a great story for you.
Okay, we have a 7:05 public hearing. Applicant is Midstate Auto Group Incorporated, requesting site plan approval for the expansion of the auto sales and service facility at 810 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., map 60, parcel 13.
Good evening, Chris Keenan from Quinn Engineering. I apologize for my tardiness, I was at another meeting in another community that ran over, so I appreciate you waiting for me. I'm here tonight with Ray Butler of Midstate Auto Group. You may remember about a year and a half ago, you approved an addition involving a garage and some paved area to the existing Midstate facility at 810 Washington Street. They're back again proposing another small addition to the rear of the building, approximately 12 by 36, for some new office space and a bathroom. They're also proposing to expand their auto sales facility by increasing the number of parking spaces that they have for vehicles for sale, and that's proposed to the side and rear of the existing building.
Okay, you can start.
Sure.
Can you aim that a little bit more towards, please? Good.
The addition's gonna relocate this area, yeah, fairly small addition considering the size of the existing facility. And then new parking area, go on the left side of the existing building, the rear, tie in the existing parking area, which is up through the middle.
Excuse me.
How many square feet is that? New addition, how many square feet is that?
500 square feet.
A little difficulty here.
The addition, 500-square-foot addition is located here. They're proposing 43 new parking spaces around the side and rear of the building. Stormwater collection system is proposed and consists of two catch basins with a stormwater treatment unit and underground stormwater chambers as is required in the groundwater three protection district, which outlets on the low side of the property. He is proposing a retaining wall along the edge of the parking area with a six-foot stockade fence along the top of it and landscaping screen in between. There is lighting proposed for the facility, I believe you do have a photometric lighting plan in your, in your set, that does show minimal, minimal photovoltaics at the property line.
We'd like that to be zero at the property line.
Yep. But that's, that's really the gist of the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How many parking spaces are you adding?
43 new spaces.
And there's enough, what was that land doing now that you're gonna?
Currently, it's undeveloped. There is an existing driveway that leads down from the upper parking lot to an area that's overgrown gravel area, there's weeds and stuff down there, basically undeveloped.
It's gonna be asphalted?
It will be asphalt.
What's the total impervious area?
I believe it's identified on the plans, I don't have it in front of me. I believe sheet one has a list of total imperviousness. I believe this list is a percentage. I believe 80% is the maximum that's allowed in the district since we're in a groundwater protection district, so we made an effort to keep it under the 80%.
Ask Adam if there's anything that he sees as a problem to this. Any concerns that you have or anyone else from departments has had for this? The impervious allowed here is 80% in your...
By special permit.
By special permit.
You were in front of the zoning board Thursday?
We did receive a special permit from the zoning board.
The only concern that I would raise for your client, and it doesn't necessarily impact this board, is verifying with the fire department what the total square footage of the building is, and whether or not that's going to be required to be sprinkled with the addition of the 500 square feet.
Okay, we'll review that at the time of building permit application.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Better to think about that now than when you submit the building application and they tell you you have to put that sprinkler system in.
I appreciate it, thank you, Adam.
This would essentially, you'd be done on this site at this point, because you don't have anywhere else to develop, right?
There's no more room for development, and that was the intention with this plan. Mr. Butler actually wanted to come in with just the addition, thinking it would be approved quicker, and it was the same process to go before the ZDA and then the planning board, so he said, let's just get everything he's got in plan for the future out here, so that we get all the approvals at once.
So are you planning to construct all of them at once?
The plan is to build the addition first, because that's what he needs most. The expansion of the parking lot is purely for auto sales, it's not for any employee parking or customer parking, so the parking lot would come as his finances dictate.
Is there a limit as to, once he gets permit, to when he can construct that? There's, there's technically a two-year limit on the length of the site plan. It's an interpretation of whether or not the construction of the building would constitute action on the site plan, and then the remaining paving would be a matter of, you know, extenuating circumstances due to finances. I mean, I think that with this site and the special permit, you would be acting on the special permit by building that addition, because that then increases your impervious surface. So I mean, I think it's a question for the building inspector, but I think that it's one of those things where I don't think we're going to punish him for being prudent with his finances.
Nope, I just wanted to make sure he knew.
Yeah. And it's not a completion within two years, it's a commencement of activity within two years. So if you get the approval tonight, and, you know, you go and pull your permit in two weeks to build the building, and you decide in April of 2015 that you're ready to go and start putting that parking lot in, you're still within your two years, and you're not gonna, you're not gonna run into an issue.
Thank you.
Any board comment? Jimmy?
Nope, I'm off second.
Set an order of conditions?
All the usual. This is site plan approval, right?
Correct. Motion to approve with the standard conditions?
We want, we're gonna, let's, let's do the conditions first, that's what Adam suggested to us.
So we're looking at construction hours, built per plan, other boards and commissions?
Photometric plan?
There is a photometric plan included.
Zero at the property line?
That's fine.
The only other...
Security lighting.
Are you, this is pretty commercial area, I don't, is that as much of a concern?
There are some houses there.
Yeah, you know, buts.
There are some houses on Appleton Road, we just don't wanna see an illumination city, like it is.
There's no houses, yeah.
There are a couple of houses on Appleton Street, but either side of us on Washington Street is Herb Chambers parking lot, so...
Yeah, so it would really just be the lighting in the rear of the lot
Okay.
that they would be looking at security lighting, right? My only other condition that...
When you add the new, excuse me, when you add the new parking area, that will affect those houses on Appleton Road more than it does now, so we just wanna have zero at the property line, shields on it, and...
That's reasonable, and we do have those notes on the plans.
My only other condition would be, Mr. Keenan submitted a set of plans this afternoon to clean up a minor comment from Graves. I would just be looking for verification that, that, that his amendment cleans up that comment, I don't think it's a, it's a big issue, I just don't want there to be something on the plan that a layer wasn't turned on when they were printed or something like that.
Sure, and more amenable to that.
Yeah. All right, so we have construction hours, 8 to 5, Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 12, Saturday, no Sundays or holidays, constructed per the submitted and approved plans, abide by the conditions and approvals of all other boards and commissions, security lighting shall be turned on after 9:00 P.M., zero at the lot line and shields, and that you receive a final sign-off from Graves on, on the last amendments. And we have a motion?
We have a motion to approve with conditions?
You have a motion?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is approved?
Thank you, and again, I apologize for my tardiness, and I thank you for waiting.
I think your client suffered more than we did.
Good luck.
Okay. You couldn't get CMF to do this for, you know, $2,000?
Is the hearing?
The next hearing, I received a request to continue from...
Let me read it first, Adam.
Okay.
We had a public hearing, and it doesn't have a time, well, 7:30 public hearing.
Correct.
Applicant was Herb Chambers, Prospect Street LLC, requesting a site plan review for a proposed automotive sales inventory lot and service center as allowed in sections 3263 and 4351 of the Auburn zoning bylaws. On property located at 20 Prospect Street, Auburn, Mass., map 60, parcel 8. On property located at 20 Prospect Street, Auburn, Mass., map 60 parcel 8.
I received a request for continuance. They have received verbal comments from the DOT. They have not received written comments, thus they felt it was prudent to continue. They've asked for continuance to the next available meeting. My understanding is that there are at least two members, if not more, who are unavailable for the 9-July meeting that we would normally have, so I guess I'm opening up to the board whether or not you wish to meet two weeks in a row or whether you wish to abandon the meeting on the 9th and meet on just the 23rd and have one meeting in the month of July.
Which is the meeting we're gonna start to share with conservation. Are you here on the 23rd, Jonathan?
Wendy?
I'll be back. I'm thinking I'm gonna be here, but I might not, so we'll go with that for now.
We have three members who will be here, so you will have a quorum to be able to hold it. I'm not sure about Mr. Kosky, but...
He should be all set for the 23rd.
I, yeah, I...
He called me late today and told me that he was tied up on a frame, so he couldn't make it.
So are we looking to continue them to the 23rd?
I have a motion to continue the 23rd of July at...
7:30?
7:30. Second?
Wendy made the motion, second.
Second. Wendy motion, Jimmy second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
All right, so now we will talk a little bit further about Herb Chambers before I move you guys along to other things. We received a traffic study at the last meeting from Herb Chambers. I received a request from a board member to have this reviewed by VHB to ensure that the methodology and some of the computations and others, or other things in there are correct and sort of makes sense with the development at hand. I received today the cost estimate, which I passed out at the beginning or when we moved into this meeting, of $2,700 for a review of the traffic study. That's equivalent to what they paid for the peer review of...
Who did the traffic study? BHB?
No, I'm...
Conley.
Was it Conley?
Conley.
Okay. So I guess, VHB has not incurred any costs. They haven't done any review. This is their initial cost estimate submitted to me for signature to give them authorization to proceed. I'm, I think it's a bit high for an additional review. I did speak with Sarah Whiting, who is the woman at VHB that we've been dealing with on the other review. We talked a little bit, and she said that the scope is fairly extensive, has a fair amount of background, so if the board feels that this cost is excessive, we can do a couple of different things. We could decide to not have it reviewed. We could try and shop for another peer reviewer. I think that that may be costly based on the fact that VHB has a familiarity with the project at this point, or we could look at pairing the scope back some to get down to the specific items that the board would like to see reviewed so that they can produce a review that would be reasonable as far as cost, but also serve the board's needs and ensure that the board is given a comfort level that what's in the report...
Well, I would think that this is what you must have asked them to do, the $2,700.
Well, I sent it over and said...
I'd like to, you know, it's a big project that's out in the street. You know, we don't want, well, I don't want entrances or exits on Prospect Street if there's any possible way to avoid them. I don't know how the other board may be...
I agree with you. I think the $2,700 is exactly what we need as far as the review goes, and it is what it is. If they're gonna give a comprehensive review and it costs $2,700 bucks, well, so be it.
I guess I would disagree. First of all, I think the cost is substantial compared to the overall cost of what they've already done for the review, but more importantly, I think my issues, I guess, aren't necessarily with the traffic counts. My issues are more with the traffic patterns, and I don't know if those, this review is consistent with that. I think the challenge that we were having was, and that we relayed to them in the last meeting, was truck traffic along Prospect Street, which they've, they had agreed to review with Mass. DOT, identify a clear path forward from them, and then address that if they needed to. If there was, we had discussed with them in the last meeting potentially having, if there was gonna be truck traffic, if Mass. DOT did require something, or allow, rather, truck traffic to go out onto Washington Street, that they would put in some type of preventive barrier to make it so that trucks could not go out on Prospect Street. I think traffic counts are kind of, are relevant to the comments that we gave them in the last meeting.
That's not just what a traffic committee does, is give traffic counts. Is that...
Okay, but...
Can I just add to that, John? I think from my perspective, what I'm continuing to hear from the people that are presenting is that, you know, that's gonna have very little impact on the area. But the building that they're operating in now is 20,000 square feet sales service display area. They're building a 25,000 square foot facility that they're moving the, just the service into. And the increasing the size of the facility from 17 bays to 30 bays and the parking, the amount of cars on the lot from, you know, a couple hundred to almost 500. And the continually hearing that it's gonna have minimal impact on the neighborhood, something isn't, it's not adding up. Again, and then when you look at the traffic study that was done, curiously, the time that they were there, you know, doing the traffic count was a Tuesday afternoon.
In a blizzard.
Peak time, 4:00 to 5:30, 4:30 to 5:30, and then again on a Saturday from 12:00 to 2:00. Service areas, particularly service operations, tend to have a big influx in the morning. People want to get it done and be on their way for their day.
And that's when the heaviest traffic on the road is.
So, yeah, Mondays and Tuesdays, a little bit less. The whole thing, and it's not just the traffic study, it's the continual, gonna have very little impact, but they're not showing that, you know. I'd like to see something more concrete.
I think what my suggestion would be, and having had the conversation with Ms. Whiting, is the first item on the review is VHB will conduct a site visit, review existing intersection and roadway conditions. I think that that's an item that could probably be removed. I think that Route 20 is a fairly studied road. I think that there's, there should be enough existing condition description within the study that they should be able to not need to do that. VHB's located in Worcester, they're familiar with the area, they do enough work with DOT that, I think that that might be an item where they could sort of start to take that away. I think that the, you know, site access egress vehicles on Prospect and Route 20 is really where this board was having an issue the last time. I also think that some of the concern is that that traffic study was done based on the design they provided, and DOT could substantially alter that. And I guess that's also part of my reservation of putting a $2,700 review on a traffic study that may be substantially changed. So that's why I brought it to the board before I approached the applicant and before I made any authorization to proceed, because I really want to understand what the board wants out of this and how we might shape this to get that and be fair to the client. They've paid VHB $2,700 on the existing site plan review for the engineering and stormwater.
Well, fair to the client and also the impact to that neighborhood.
I'd like to, I'd just like to see the $2,700, what you have here from VHB.
Well...
I would too.
Well, and here's, but here's the thought. In, as far as consistency goes, this board in our last meeting addressed this client, or this applicant, and said to them, "Our concern is related to the Mass. DOT process and whether or not Mass. DOT will give you approval for this transportation thing. A, that we're now saying we also have an issue with your traffic counts and things that we didn't bring up to them in the last meeting as far as that path forward goes. And B, if Mass. DOT does come back to them and say, 'No, we're not gonna allow this,' they're gonna have to reduplicate this effort and do an engineering study." I guess I just want to be consistent as far as what it is important to them.
I think that's a good idea, and I wouldn't, until they got the measurements back from DOT on what they're gonna do, at that particular point in time, if they satisfy the DOT, et cetera, then we'll have them do a traffic study.
And I agree with what you're saying, Jonathan. You recall at that meeting, we were handed a pile of documents as we walked in the door. So we didn't have opportunity actually to ask them or even to review it to say we have additional concerns about AVNC, so, which is why we asked to continue, because we did have a lot to digest without opportunity to review that material prior to the meeting.
So do we want to wait until they get something from the, is that what you're saying? Wait until they get something from the DOT?
Again, what if the DOT says, "Hey, this ain't gonna work, okay? Do I want them to spend the $2,700 then? No, of course I don't." But if the DOT comes up with everything's roses, then I want to see that.
So we'll wait until they receive the DOT ruling?
And if it can't be done like that, then I want to see it now.
Well, and so I guess what I would look for is...
What is DOT exactly gonna rule onto them?
Whether, how the entrance on Route 20 is shaped and whether or not...
Directional, and it's only right turn.
Correct, and whether or not they can have left turn in and right turn in or only right turn in, right turnout.
Can they make that determination and make that law?
DOT?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, because Route 20 is their road.
Okay.
They have, they have total industry over how curb cuts are shaped on that.
And that makes sense to wait for the DOT piece before...
Yeah, so I agree. I agree with you.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
So based on their comment, their written comments from DOT and the shape that...
Will determine what we do with this.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that if we're going, we've continued them for a month.
Right.
If they get DOT comments, well, I'm not gonna say next week because they're not getting anything from the state next week, but if they get it the week of the 8th, then I think if everything is roses and they can go ahead with the plan as it is, I would like to collect the money and have VHB proceed so that you have a review of that traffic study for the meeting they've been continued to, rather than wait a month to then decide how to proceed to then make them wait another month.
So that we keep this process moving.
Correct. What I want to do is minimize the amount of time that they have to wait to get that done, but I also want the board to make the decision...
There's also some concerns that they heard from, I know that I voiced when I was at that night with the Prospect Street entrances and exits and try to make it internally within the site.
Yeah, there were two embuddits too that were concerned about the buffer zones between the corner of the, the upper corner of the parking lot, which would be the southernmost point...
Southeastern point of the...
Southeastern. And their house.
Correct.
There were two, there were two people. So my suggestion was gonna be with that is, again...
Well, I think that we want to avoid discussing what the issues and what the board's position on those issues are. I just want to...
Well, it's not the board's position. This is just a comment from me, okay? This is one other thing that, this is one other thing that's gonna be discussed at the next meeting.
But the applicant isn't here to have the benefit of hearing that, so...
Okay, we'll stop now.
Yeah, whether or not, yes, I just want the board to understand that whether or not it's testimony, it could be construed that way and...
We voted to continue.
It could be construed that way with the discussion of the traffic study too. He's not there to, he's not there to say anything against it.
Well, no, because, but the, but he doesn't have, he doesn't have an option. There's no option for, all they could do is say, "We're going to walk away and not do the project." The board has the authority to require this per state law.
Okay, you do what you suggested, Adam.
Okay.
Everybody on board?
Yes.
We do a formal vote on that?
That will be up to a member to make a motion.
I'm not gonna make the motion.
You have to make the motion. You're the one that brought it up.
You would make a motion to do a formal vote? Is that what you're looking for?
No, no.
Just make a motion on that you want, that we're gonna wait, we want to hold up to see what Mass. DOT rules to the applicant before we ask for an additional traffic study. Or review by, of the traffic study that already was done. So you...
No, I know, I just am saying, I'm not gonna make a motion for something that I don't support is the crux of the issue.
Wait a minute. You've just said, "We're gonna wait," and Adam's gonna...
I agree. I think though, it's a highway business zone. I want to get out of here too. It's a highway business zone. We have addressed the issues before, and we're doubling the cost of the applicant and potentially adding additional time to the application.
It's a big, it's a pretty huge project that they're doing, so...
It is a very huge project.
It takes them a few months to get it done, and there's been other things that have gone a lot longer.
And we've had other issues too that, you know, I don't want to get into any of them right this minute. We'll wait till next week.
So then just trust us that, Adam already has the word to go and depend on what he gets from DOT.
I think Mr. Weaver's point is that he would like to be put on record opposing the position and tact that the board has taken.
Well, let him make a, let him make a motion.
He makes a motion, he opposes though.
Oh, he's making a motion, he opposes.
Strange things happen.
Then let it go, because I'm not gonna make the motion.
All right. You are on record.
All right.
Okay.
All right, so we have two more very quick things. We have the approval letter for 440 Washington Street.
Anybody have any questions with it? Planning Board voted three to zero to approve the application of site plan approval for 440 Washington Street. Who were the three people that were present?
It was Wendy, Paul, and me.
Okay.
This is Mr. Brooks.
Oh, it does? Oh, you're right, it does. Was it Paul or was it John? It was me.
Okay.
Was it you?
Oh, I erased Wendy instead of...
I'll be right back.
In the meantime, you guys can sign this form A. Is that the one that was sent out?
Yes.
Where's it from then?
It's right there. This is the land that the town has negotiated to purchase from the Masonic Lodge over on Masonic Square in order to construct the middle school.
I know that.
Run it over. Run it. Go ahead. There's everything else they do. Cat before the horse.
Does this all have to be the same pen on this one? This one might be.
No.
It's a regular pen.
Yeah.
You got a mile line. There is one.
I got one too.
Sure. Can you build? I like to reset. I don't write back. Hey, see this? Watch. See it writing? You don't see it, do you? My God.
We don't sign if we're not present.
Correct. If you didn't vote, you don't sign.
Bruce, thank you. Might need it.
Doing okay back there, Rich? It's gonna be prime time.
He's starting to look sleepy.
Yeah.
Make the motion again.
Is there anything else? What's her name? Karen Doin.
Valentine?
Yeah. She was, she was out there today with them.
Oh, she gonna, she be...
She's, I think she's the root safety officer.
Anything else, Adam? Nothing to sign?
I'm making motions with Jen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, there's minutes.
Okay, do the minutes.
Let's do the minutes next time.
Well, you don't have the minutes for the 11th because I haven't done them yet.
There you go. Problem solved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
The vote, night.
Thanks.